All set to go? All right, let's bring this July meeting of the Clean City Commission to order. Have a roll call, please.
Chairperson Russell.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Wing.
Here.
Commissioner Bowman.
Present.
Commissioner Cummins.
Here.
Commissioner Ferry is excused. Commissioner Hollins.
Here.
Commissioner Van Hassel is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes?
No.
Of last month's meeting?
No.
The meetings are not ready.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even look at this. I'm just going by. Consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Clean City Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or reschedule for the matter for consideration and discussion at a later time. Carol, you wanted to have to say something.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Carol DeCarnoli and I live at 208 Oak Street, just down the way a bit. And I invited a bunch of my friends to come tonight, but they're weak in the knees because it's too hot. Anyway, my big thing right now is, and it's not something that's citywide, but we want to bag our stuff when we put it in our dumpsters and that. And of course, I'm privileged because I live downtown on an alleyway with the business district, and I get those big dumpsters. And that's a wonderful thing. But, we have a lot of transients downtown that when you bag and everything, they go through all the stuff, throw the garbage on the ground, and you know, it makes for a mess all the time. I don't know how we can fix it. But I would like, you know, some miraculous thing to happen, like maybe in my water bill they'll tell me that they're gonna do garbage pickup in the alley on Oak Street. This is just a, for instance, before 7:00 AM. So I'll get out there in the morning and get my bags in there before, you know, someone can come along and empty them and throw the bags that end up in my tree and, you know, go on and on and on. My other thing is, and I just had a mind blog, oh darn it, what was it? Oh, when we do the street sweeping, and I'm not sure if you're over this, or if there's a copy of, sweet, street but cleaning, are you? Different one? Okay. Anyway, wouldn't it be wonderful if, you know, especially downtown where I want everything to become beautiful again and bring tourists in, and we have the big wide streets, if we could get a notice in our water bills that says, okay, the street sweep is gonna come down Oak on such and such a day, we're going to do the north side of the street on Tuesday, so all people that live on that side, please park on the south side. And on Wednesday, we're going to do the south side of the street, and if the people would park on that side. And you probably could do that in a bigger area than Oak Street, but I just know Oak Street. Anyway, so that's my two things, and then I want to talk to you when we do recycling, okay? Okay, thanks for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? Close the comments. Reports. Public Works Day in conjunction with the Arch Dedication. A report regarding the meet public, meet public works portion of the Arch Dedication First Friday event that was held on July 6, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, we did attend the Arch Dedication, and we had invited the Clean City Commission to participate, and we just wanted to share some of the photographs we had taken. It was a great event. It was estimated that there were 1,400 people down there throughout the course of the evening. And we appreciate the Commission's support and attendance, and I thought it was a great event. I don't know if anybody had anything they wanted to share. We had all of our divisions of Public Works down there to kind of demonstrate what they did and some of their functions. We had a PW Paws and the recycling mascot down there. It was a warm day, a little rainy, a lot of interest in the sanitation trucks, seemed to be a favorite of the kids. So we just want to give a brief report. You know, we're looking to do a Public Works event every year. I don't think that we've identified exactly what that's gonna be every year, but I think this one went off really well, so that's all I had in my report.
I think with the conditions that we had down there, with our little wind blasts that we had once in a while, things went really, really very well. And I was amazed at the number of people that showed up. And I thank Eddie's Department for all those bags, and I guess Public Works was involved with the stuffing of those bags. That was, we gave away a lot of bags, and I mean, we were out, within two hours it was gone. So that was, it was really good. I had not anticipated that much interest in static booths. I figured everybody'd be playing and/or eating kettle corn or something like that, but we had a lot of, a lot of people stopping and asking questions and making comments. Mostly good, a few negative, but all in all, I think it went very well.
I thought it was a lot of positive interaction with the public, so I think that's kind of what the point was, and I'm glad that happened.
Any other comments?
I enjoyed it. I thought it was great. I was really surprised at the amount of people and kids floating everywhere, but it was good.
The only comment that I did have on the negative side was on the dedication, the PA system was useless.
Right.
You couldn't hear it at all, so, other than that, everything went very well.
Good.
Okay. All business. Mojave County Fair Booths. Decorating discussions and list of things that need to be ordered for the booth at the Mojave County Fair September 13th to the 16th.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I did deal with Rich, got a copy of the catalog that he had used to order last year. I also got a copy of what you did order last year.
Good.
So I thought maybe we could take a few minutes to kind of go through this and identify, maybe give us some direction on what you'd like us to purchase. I think with the Arch Dedication, I don't think you have much inventory of goodies to hand out at the fair, so it's probably time to stock up, and it's a new budget year, so the Commission has a new pot of money to dedicate towards public education, so.
I'm sorry, did you say we have enough money to get some more bags?
Yes ma'am. Our new budget year kicked in, so the Clean City Commission is, for the year, is budgeted at $13,000.
So the same as last year?
Yes.
Okay. I was looking through some of the stuff that we had last year, and I don't see the one thing, on the day when the school classes come through, we give away a ton of stuff, and we used plastic bags that were made from reusable, recycled plastic, and we stuffed those bags with that, so that we weren't giving away our expensive reusable bags. And I didn't see them listed in here.
Yeah.
On the stuff that I have. I kept this from last year.
Well, here's some biodegradable litter bags, would that be?
I was looking, maybe this was it.
You're using a different company.
No, this is, this is the order from last year, so it's the same company.
But I thought that, if we don't have them listed here, that might be something to find out from Rich, where he got those, rather than giving away a ton of really expensive bags.
Well, this does show those Oxos biodegradable litter bags.
Ah, okay. Yes, they were biodegradable, that's it.
So I don't know if you'd like us just to duplicate this order this year, or if there's things that you weren't happy with, or some other things that you want to look at?
Sticker books and tattoos. Do we want the tattoos?
We were discussing that on the way over here about the tattoo things. We gave away a ton of them at the First Friday Dedication and...
I still have two stacks about this bag of tattoos.
Two stacks. Then I don't think we need to order any more tattoos if we've got two stacks left.
Yeah, but they're only, you know...
Little stickers, we might, we might get some more stickers.
Oh yeah.
And...
I think the parents liked the stickers a lot more than the tattoos.
I beg your pardon?
I think the parents liked the stickers a lot more than they did the tattoos.
I think so too. Is that, Rob, is that the top of the order?
Um, no, that is there.
Okay, we got the seeds, good.
The coloring books and the little packets of crayons, four crayons, I thought were a good...
And this on there? Stickers, take the tattoos off. There's, there's the coloring books.
Yeah.
Oh no, that's a sticker book.
I think...
Oh, that's a change, Jack.
Okay, so we could add some coloring books and some crayons.
The wood, the pencils were good, I thought they were a lot better than the wax ones, don't you?
Yeah. I had no feeling one way or the other, but be honest with you.
I like the wood ones better.
The pencils rather than the crayons?
Well, you have the wood colored pencils, that's good.
Okay.
But I don't think you need the crayons.
All right.
And then go down just a little.
Think that's...
Yeah, I had a...
Oh, I'm sorry, go up a little. Um, wait a minute, wait a minute. Litter bags, stickers.
I had a notation, we spent $295 on pencils last year.
Yeah, it's 295, again.
It's also the same.
Okay.
Well, the total was $1,790, but that was for the whole year, which would have included the fair stuff, so.
Is this new prices?
No, this was last year's order.
Oh, last year's, okay, okay.
And the seeds that were in the little packs with the...
Right, that's on the top.
Okay, that was 275, yep, okay.
293.
So that's gone up a little bit. Did we have a... We got a question in the audience here. Can we take it now or...
It's the Commissioner's discretion.
If him, if, 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 if,
Magnets.
We will, I think we are totally out of reusable bags. If we want to do reusable bag giveaways to the adults, uh, we are totally out of reusable bags. As far as I know, I got the last box from Rich when it was down there for the meditation day. So.
So, does that sound reasonable?
Sounds reasonable.
Can you go down?
Huh?
Seeds, stickers, no tattoos. Oh, yes, it says it's a sticker book. We had coloring books.
Yeah, yeah, they were, they were called, uh.
Biodegradable. I got it here, wait a minute.
So coloring books instead of sticker books?
Um.
Now, here they are, they were called eco-friendly fun.
No.
That was the one that looked like, if this was two years ago, we spent four hundred seventy-six, seven dollars for.
Oh, they do say sticker books.
Yeah.
No, but we had a coloring book.
We got coloring books, they're, they're.
We had coloring books. I don't, I don't see them this year. See, but it's a sticker book.
Sometimes sticker books, though, you can put stickers and color. It just means it has like a sheet of stickers.
You know, I, I never even opened it up last year.
Yeah, some of them do that.
Was it the stickers?
Oh.
You can like, put the stickers and then color.
Uh, maybe I'm wrong. Uh, well, what were those coloring books that you supplied in your giveaway?
Color books that we have, have no stickers. That might be what you're thinking.
Uh.
They called me one year, I don't remember if it was last year, they gave you some extra because the first day when all the school kids came through, they wiped out what you had, so we dropped off some extra stuff for you.
Okay.
Yeah, but they do have coloring books here.
Can I say something real quick?
Go ahead.
You told me I could.
Pull the microphone over so we can hear you.
What about activity books? Where the kids can, you know, do the number thing and the, the little mazes and color and maybe a few stickers or something? You know, I think that's more advice, but I don't know, I don't know if they would have a, a Clean City.
Agenda on it.
If, or if they're even available.
We don't know if they would print them up with our logo on it or not, that would.
No, not that so much, but if they're about recycling, are they about recycling or just about general stuff?
Everything is spare.
Recycle, oh, okay. Anyway, I think that'd be more educational and I will sit down now.
Do you have any kind of, Eddie, do you have any kind of a price on what those coloring books cost you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do.
Um.
I do.
Oh, you do.
I went on, on the inter, internet. The coloring books are forty-nine, now, it's just.
Forty-nine for forty-nine cents a piece.
Well, it's low as thirty-seven cents a piece. Now, what quantities, I couldn't say.
Yeah.
The activity books are forty-nine, forty-one, minimum. Uh.
I would say we look into getting those coloring books. Because if we, they were, they were like eighty-nine cents.
Each.
We bought them in here. Yeah. Yeah, as low as twenty-two, um. Uh, let's see, that's what I'm looking to see here.
I, I couldn't get it to print the, the breakdown.
Doesn't, yeah, it doesn't give a breakdown of how many we order to get that price. Yeah. Yes, uh, we don't know what the breakdown, as low as thirty-seven cents.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if we have them, we have our, our name put on them or logo or anything, which, I don't know that it's all that necessary. It's nice, but.
Is that me?
Into that.
Coloring books instead of sticker books?
Coloring books, yeah, see what the break is on it and, and order, order, uh.
Why don't we do five hundred of each?
Well, that's what I was thinking, five hundred is a good number.
Coloring books and, and what we had.
And the stickers?
Sticker books.
If you don't get them all out at the fair.
Well, and I was gonna bring.
Or have other.
Exactly, I was gonna bring that up.
Go to fifty-fifty, activity books and coloring books.
Okay.
What do you think?
I, I, I think that's a good idea. Um. Two fifty of each. You want two fifty of each or five hundred of each?
I don't know, if we can go five hundred of each, that's great.
What, what, oh, we had five hundred last year. So we had five hundred bags, so if we go two fifty, two fifty.
Okay, alright.
See it? Eco-friendly sticker books, five hundred.
Yeah.
So if we go two fifty, two fifty.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Okay, we're settled.
Alright, I think we're good, I think. We've got to record us, so we're good, thank you very much, I apologize, I just didn't come up with a better way to do it, to get input from all of you, so I know that was a little cumbersome.
Oh, this thing's, this thing's.
While we're on the fair. We gave away t-shirts last year too, remember? When we remembered it?
Uh, those were on the hourly drawing we gave the t-shirts away, yeah.
Do we have any?
I think so.
I don't know, I'll have to check on t-shirts.
Yeah, I, I think, I think Rich has got a bunch of them down there.
Okay.
Um, I can, I, I, as in the past, I supplied three tables that worked out for ten by ten booths, or six-foot tables, I'll bring those. Um, coverings, last year we used plastic, do we have?
We've actually.
Okay.
I have the one.
One?
White, but they're very inexpensive, if you wanted to get a couple more. I, oh, I have white linen tablecloths, if you would.
White what?
Like white linen. Two of them on them.
We don't want anything that's gonna get messed up, that's.
Each of them. Could be worse than the food, though.
The, the, the front booth would be nice to have, have a, a nice tablecloth on. Uh, otherwise, we could use plastic on the sides. Um, so if you bring your, you bring your tablecloth, uh, okay.
What if I got a green one?
I was gonna say, I really don't mind bringing white, unless you want to color.
Should we have a green one on the front?
Do we have a green one, I?
I don't know, but if it's plastic, they're not that expensive, I'll get it for you.
Do we still have our green one at home? You, any idea where it might be? Okay, we do, I think, uh, we bought a bunch of blank, uh, uh, tablecloths for a Demond Mennel show and, uh, I think we kept one of the green ones because we went with all white and, uh, so, okay, I think we're covered with tablecloths then. And if our council play is on, we'll, we'll, uh, volunteer to do, to do the PowerPoint, we'll, we can set that up and have the screen and, and all like we did and just have the loop going constantly.
Do we, do we still, do we still have the material from last year that we can roll over?
I think we do. I can check with Rich on that, see if he still has that.
Mr. Chairman, I can't get a que, I'll check with Rich on that.
Okay.
Did the commission get together and, um, fill out a schedule of who was gonna man the booths?
I'm sorry, I, I can't.
I'm sorry, did the commission have a schedule last year of who was gonna man the booths at what time periods?
Yes, uh, Sarah. Commissioner Ferry was handling that along with, uh, were you working with her on that or, I can't remember, it seemed like someone else was gonna work with her on that.
Um, the only thing I did is, is when I went to the, um.
Transit advisory.
Thank you. Um, I gave them Sarah's information because I thought Sarah was gonna do it.
But she was, she was setting the schedule, uh, so between now and then, we'll get that schedule finalized.
Uh, yeah, I told everybody to contact her.
We got the month of August to, to do that, get that done. Uh, and being this is an election year, I'm sure we'll get people from the council that'll be coming sit in on it. Anything else?
Um, tourism. You want me to check out tourism last year?
Oh, yeah, if they have information that they wanna put, uh, on the table, we can do that, or if they wanna come and, and join us, they're, they're welcome to join in for our, whatever they wanna, uh, the.
Okay.
Josh Noble, he will supply all kinds of information.
I have a list of what he supplied.
So, we'll have plenty of those kind of handouts.
And Parks and Rec are all ready, I'll pick it up the Friday before.
Okay.
Nope, 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 Monday before.
Uh.
And, um, Transit said I could pick up their stuff, which will be new, the Friday bef, the Monday before the fair.
Now, we've had, uh, Siri Tabor, she used to sit in with us when, when Transit was there before, so she, whether she's still on that commission or not, I can.
She wasn't present.
Okay.
She wasn't present.
Anything else we can think of?
Did, uh, we want whatever Erase can, uh, supply?
Sorry?
Erase. They got ba, they got litter bags, they got other literature on, uh, the anti-litering and, uh, county and stuff.
You know, we get a lot of people from the county coming through the fair, I can't see why it would hurt to have something from Erase, uh, on the table.
Yeah, I'll argue with Todd and get that stuff from him and.
From the race, what, what race?
Mahawati County Erase, uh, environmental police.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they wanna supply anything, great. You had something?
When you order, if you, when, when it comes, just let me know and I'll stuff it.
Okay.
I'll stuff bags.
Yeah, we'll set up a game, we'll stuff bags, yeah.
Do we need to make a motion to spend the money on?
Oh, I make a motion that we, that we spend about approximately, if, if not a little bit more than what, what we did last year.
Okay.
I'll second that. We'll check with the fairgrounds to see about how they're gonna work their, uh, passes for getting in and out of the fair. What we did in the past is, is, uh, we would, whoever was coming in, the person that was leaving would meet them at the gate and give them their pass and they would come.
Mr. Chairman, you got a motion on the, on the floor that's been seconded, could you, could you hold a vote on that?
We have to vote whether or not, how much money we can spend.
We wanna.
Just about like last year, right?
About like, well, didn't we go a little over budget last year? Because I think you guys picked up a little bit of the tab last year, yeah, I think we were around twelve hundred dollars if I'm not mistaken, something.
No, the grand total was seventeen.
Seventeen hundred, okay. So, uh, if we can keep it to within, what, what's our, do we have a budget?
Well, the motion's been made that we spend about the same as we did last year.
The motion has been made and that we spend approximately the same amount of money as what we spent last year, do I hear a second? I second it, motion's been made and second, any more?
A vote?
Pardon me?
We have to vote on it.
Yes, I am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, any more discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
If not, all who is in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now.
We're started. Okay. Item B, uh, curbside recycling pilot program. Um, continue discussion and possible action regarding curbside recycling pilot program, uh, presentation.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you've seen this presentation four, four or five times now. And, uh, just like I says, as a staff, we've appreciated the input we've gotten from you. I think you gave us a lot of valuable input and, and things that we needed to dive a little bit deeper into. Um, I think we've addressed a lot of that in this presentation. Um, when we get to the end, we'll have some discussion then, but if you see anything along the line, along the way through it, if you have any questions or see things that need to be clarified, you know, we, again, we value your input, so. So our objective is to share the results of the pilot program and present staff recommendations. Just a summary of the program, it encompasses about five hundred and fifty homes in Warwick Ranch and Legacy Neighborhoods. It's a single stream collection, we're not asking, uh, residents to sort, it goes into one ninety-gallon can. So the outreach that we did at the beginning and continuing through the program has been door-to-door, mailers, website, signage placed at the subdivision entrances and social media. Some of the evaluation criteria we, uh, are utilizing is participation, contamination, diversion, cost, and that's cost of collection, sorting, disposal. One of the biggest issues we've had is the market volatility and we'll get into that a little bit later in the presentation. So what is collected in the pilot program is, uh, limited more so than what's collected in the drop program. Uh, so we have plastics one, five and seven, tin cans, aluminum cans, mixed paper and cardboard. In the drop program, we have all the same items, but we also accept, uh, plastic bags and glass. So these are some of the results for, uh, these are weekly totals, uh, after this slide going forward, there'll be, uh, monthly totals. So, this just shows the participation, contamination and diversion. So, you know, we started out rough, it was a bad month to start it with two Monday holidays in there that kind of threw, uh, threw our collection schedules off. So I think a lot of people were missing their days. Since then, it's kind of recovered, participations hanging around forty-five percent. Uh, and again, that's not, that's not as clear-cut of an indicator, I guess, as it may appear. I think a lot of people are utilizing the program, they just don't fill up a ninety-gallon can in one week, it may take them two or three, so as we're going through and clicking, counting how many blue cans are out, you know, if one's out every third week, but it's full, that's, you know, equivalent to one being out every week with, you know, that, that's a third full.
Rob?
Sir. I can attest to that, I'm in the pilot area and I'm a staunch recycling advocate, I, small household, I might get that can a quarter full and put it out once a month.
Uh, it's.
Recycle everything I can.
Yeah, because it is remarkable, I notice now that I don't have three kids at home, we don't make anywhere near the garbage that we used to, you know, so. Um, contamination was an issue, uh, you know, more so at the beginning, but I think there was some confusion out there, I think as we got the word out. Now, it's, it's still problematic, I guess you could say. Then the diversion rates, you know, just so, as, diversion rates are a good goal, we wanna try to keep things out of the landfill, but if things that are supposed to go to the landfill, need to go to landfill, end up in the recycling stream, then that's causing more contamination and actually more material going to landfill, because we're throwing out, you know, one can that's good, other than, uh, two pizza boxes in there, you know, that load is contaminated.
Mm-hmm.
So, we get to that a little bit later in the, in the presentation, but I think, you know, the theory used to be that, you know, when in doubt, try to recycle it. I think that's kind of what led to some of the issues that's going on now with the contamination being significant enough. Some of the, uh, commodity purchasers are just fed up with dealing with that contamination. So this is the combined tonnage for both the program and the drop program. And when we did the council presentation, they had a lot of questions about, uh, pilot versus drop. And we weren't, I guess, we hadn't done enough research at that time. So by month, you can see that the pilot program, you know, averages somewhere between, you know, six and eight tons. Drop program is between a hundred into the eighties, tons per month. So, and this is broken down month by month of what our costs are. We have some of the same costs for both, you know, we have the, um, you know, picking up, whether we're picking up at somebody's home or whether we're picking up at one of the drop locations, and then the transport to, uh, whoever we're, we're giving, giving the commodity to. In the pilot program, there's added costs and what those added costs are, are the labor costs for sorting. So when the truck comes back from the neighborhood, you know, it basically dumps that load on the ground and we've got inmates that spend anywhere, I think they're getting a lot better at it at first, it was better of a couple days out there sorting that load. Um, so those labor costs are factored in to that. So then we kind of decided to do a comparison between the two. So, I mean, you see the, the drop program costs more, but it delivers, you know, a lot, a lot higher tonnage than the pilot program. So when you break out those costs, the cost to process one ton of recyclables in the pilot program is over four hundred and fifty dollars. In the drop program, it's, um, just over two hundred and twenty. So, and so a lot of that is reflected in those labor costs for the sorting. So in our view, now, the drop program is a highly successful recycling program and compared with our pilot curbside program, I think it's pretty clear that it's more efficient. So here's kind of a breakdown from the pilot program and the drop program. So the top two, uh, bullet points are monthly statistics. So the pilot program, again, has five hundred and fifty homes, which is approximately five percent of all sanitation accounts. And as you go through, you might see, if you're doing the math along with us, you know, there's some decimal dust in there because it's like five point six eight or, or four point six eight and we've rounded some. So, again, the average ton in the pilot program is six point six tons, in the drop, it's ninety-one point six for the month. Um, the cost, again, is three thousand sixty-four in the pilot program per ton and, or no, I'm sorry, that's the total cost for the month, is three thousand sixty-four dollars, in the drop program, it's twenty thousand two hundred and ninety. Price, or the cost per ton, again, from the previous slide, is four hundred and sixty-three, two twenty-one in the drop program. So just doing, just figuring out how much it costs each account for the respective programs. With the five hundred and fifty, five hundred and fifty homes, that works out to about five dollars and fifty-six cents per account. Now, the drop program, and this isn't a straight across-the-board comparison, because the drop program would be, is funded by all of our ratepayers, which is about eleven thousand eight hundred of them. And again, it also benefits the county who do not, does not participate in funding the program. But the only thing, the only logical thing we could see was to apply it to all accounts, because this is an enterprise fund, we're supposed to be, uh, providing services based upon the rates that we charge. So applying that twenty thousand dollars to eleven thousand eight hundred accounts works out to a dollar seventy-two per account. So to extrapolate what we found in the pilot program, city-wise, with the eleven thousand eight hundred homes, the projected annual tonnage would be sixteen hundred and ninety-nine. Now currently, in the drop program, which again is a citywide plus county program, we're collecting over a thousand tons. So again, you can see the cost, again, the cost by ton. So a citywide curbside program, based upon our calculations, and, and we're not accountants, but we had accountants check our numbers, would be sixty, over sixty-six dollars per count per year to pay for that program in addition to the upfront capital of over half a million dollars just in, uh, new blue cans.
So, so you're talking about one point two, one point three mil to do it statewide? The containers plus the projected cost?
Yes, ma'am, it'd be.
Thank you.
Now, again, you know, we have in our budget for a, uh, rate and revenue study for the sanitation fund this year. And, so, I mean, our plan is to bring in professionals who do this for a living to go through and look at what we need recharging for rates just to keep the solid waste program solvent and healthy. And we can ask them to look at a curbside citywide program and what that would add to the rate. And we, we would need to ask them about continuing the drop program, see what that would add to the rate on top of the solid waste charge, so. That, that money is budgeted, we are talking to consultants now to try to find one to do that for us. This is based upon our quick and dirty math, based upon the last seven months. So this is some of the background information on the cost. Um, transportation, along with sorting, transportation's a, a large part of that in that we're driving to Las Vegas, where with the solid waste, we're driving to the Servat landfill. So you can see the cost per trip is significantly higher to drive to Vegas. And we're doing that, sometimes we're doing that two times a day, twice a week.
But four times a week.
So, uh, the commission had asked us about some information on the landfill itself. Um, you know, this is a big issue back east that kind of drives a lot of the recycling discussion, is just the, the lack of landfill space. It's not such an issue for us out here in the, in the wide-open desert, but we did contact Mahawati County and they own the landfill, Gambi Disposal operates it, uh, the current cell that we're utilizing has about one year left. They have a new cell that will be coming in, coming online in the near future. Uh, that cell will have a life expectancy of thirty years and there's over a hundred acres, uh, to continue to build more cells in the future out of the landfill. County participation, we kind of alluded to this earlier too, you know, we don't have good numbers, I can't tell you how many people, how many county residents utilize the, the drop program. I bet it's probably pretty significant, but I don't know.
There's no way to really find out, no way.
You could man a drop site for a day or two and do a survey, I'm not sure how many people would answer that, you know, um, I don't know, and that, it, it would be totally unscientific, you know, whatever our results were, so, I don't know. We had reached out to, uh, County Development Services, they are the, uh, they oversee the landfill. Uh, I have kind of prepped them that, uh, we may be coming for a formal request for participation in the drop program, assuming that continues. I'm not optimistic, I guess, because we've tried that in the past with our, uh, cart, bus system, to try to get some. system, to try to get some county participation, since we service county residents with that program too. And that has not happened. Let's see. So this, and this was some of the background information that, again, you had requested, because I don't, I don't think this was real clear before, but city has three, well, now the city has four enterprise funds now. We have water, wastewater, sanitation, and the airport. The idea with the enterprise fund is that they are self-sufficient. They are not utilizing tax revenues. They are supported by the rates they charge their users. So the idea is that these operations are run like a business, that the general fund or other sales tax revenues aren't going to bail them out when they're in trouble, that they need to make the hard choices that they make, and operate within their means, and charge enough to cover the cost of the services they provide. Sanitation, again, we're working on doing a rate study this year. It's been over 10 years since our rates have been raised. You'd asked a little bit about the condition. Sanitation funds in a rough position right now. Again, this year, we had to defer the purchase of new trucks. We've had to do that two times in the last five, where the fund balance wasn't high enough to allow us to replace some of our vehicles. See, our average, average age of our fleet is 13 years. It says it's recommended to change out of fleet every eight years. I've been to fleet asset management classes in the valley. There are cities down there, Tempe, Mesa, and I know they're a lot different than we are. But there are cities down there that don't keep a vehicle more than seven years. Because the theory is you get the most useful life out of that first seven years of that vehicle. After that, it's costing you more money than buying a new one, trying to keep them running that long. It's costing you more money, especially with garbage trucks. The garbage trucks and buses are probably the highest maintenance vehicles in our fleet, other than maybe police cars. That's more the way they're driven. So this kind of summarizes the fund balance. Again, we're trying to keep a certain percentage, once expenses are covered by revenues, we try to keep enough held back that if there was some kind of catastrophic event and we were unable to collect rates for 90 days, that we could continue to operate. So we try to keep a fund balance reserve. And because of the concern about maintaining that fund balance reserve, that's the reason that we've had those years when we haven't been able to replace trucks. So back to some of the original discussion we had, the market for recyclable materials is non-existent. It's different depending where you're at in the country. I think the Pacific Northwest and the Western United States, it's probably hit harder than anybody. I think, I think the East Coast is kind of seeing hope that maybe India is a new market that could be exploited. We've tried working with partners locally, Waste Management doesn't want any of our commodity, Bulldog disposal takes certain things, but that list has kind of shrunk over time, and what we have to pay them to take it has increased over time. And this is something that Commissioner Hollins talks about a lot, is that this lack of a local MRF is, really impacts our ability to try to do as efficient of a recycling program as we could. Just adding in those costs of trucking into Vegas, it just kind of distorts the whole picture.
Do we have a breakdown on how much cardboard and mixed paper that we collect every month?
Mark, separately?
However you feel it.
We take the Bulldog coming. Those are on the drop site location, go straight to their facility, process it.
Do they give you weight that you took down there?
What they do with theirs is they bail it, and then they send it off to Omegle. They don't sort it, go straight. Most days, we'll wait for the bale to be empty, back or drop it.
So we don't have, we don't know of the quantity that we pin down there?
Yeah. Now separately, these numbers, I have numbers that'll say what we're dropping off and what we have to pay for it.
Yeah, we've got quantities of the mixed material, cardboard and mixed paper.
Yeah, if I could get that, I might have a, I'm working on a plan. Don't know how it'll come out, but if I know that quantity, that'll help do that, and hopefully bring the price to nothing, or maybe make a little bit of money whenever so. If I can get that, I will investigate further on that.
Appreciate it. Thanks, sir. I think we've touched on all these points here, kind of doing this presentation out of order, I guess. This just shows, this reflects the drop in commodity prices. I believe this is the Pacific Northwest. Basically, they went from 97.50 a ton to $5 a ton. That's from, that's from March, so I don't know where they... I guess this just illustrates that even some of the biggest players in the field are struggling with this. Waste Management, Republic are having a hard time, and with all the benefits that they have from being the big boys on the block, then you can see, see the difficulties for So we were talking about this, the emphasis to reduce and reuse may become more of a focus than the recycle, because again, if we're recycling things we're not sure of, and we're contaminating loads, that's just going to compound the problem. So maybe the focus of the education ought to be on the reduce and reuse, and recycle Wishful recycling, I guess, is the term I was trying to find. So kind of in conclusion, I think that, we view the pilot program as a success. We were able to gather data, very important for us. I think it'll be very important for us moving forward with our, with our revenue and rate study. I think we've done a lot of the grunt work that those folks will be confirming, but moving forward. As of right now, we don't see any point in continuing the program. I think we've collected the information that we sought to collect. I mean, the program was intended to be a pilot from the beginning. I think we've got a lot of great information out of it. What we see at this point, and I guess, this is at the commission's discretion, if you're comfortable making a recommendation at this meeting, that's great. If you think that there's other questions you have, or other research that we need to do, that's fine too. But as a staff, I think we're comfortable, and we would recommend that the Clean City Commission forward a recommendation to the Cayman Common Council to conclude the curbside pilot program and continue the easy recycling drop program. And this recommendation would be revisited pending completion of the sanitation rate and revenue study. So with that, I can answer any questions?
I got two, just in one, just curiosity. To replace one of your specialty trucks, what is the ballpark figure on one of those things?
I think a basic truck starts out at about a quarter of a million, third of a million, 200?
150. I believe last year's truck was 287,000. A specialty truck to us would be like a roll-off truck. I think that's going to be closer to 200,000. Frontload truck's going to be excess of probably 90. Those are trucks we don't use often, but have to use each week.
Which one of the trucks seemed to go away the quickest? The ones that they use every, twice a week?
Every day.
Pick them up the side loaders, yeah.
800, 1200 cans a day.
Yeah.
Purchased a couple of years back. They're running a little over a quarter of a million dollars.
And the other question I had, let's see, I made a little notation here somewhere, if I can spot my own. It was on the difference of the cost again. Let's see if I can myself organize here as to where I was at. Page five? No, here we go, on cost, yeah. Is the price going up primarily because of the, we're not getting money back from the recycling material? Or is it the cost of recycling itself gone up to the point where it's raising the cost of recycling?
Well, I think it's a combination of all. I mean, we're paying to get rid of most commodities, I guess is accurate to say. Most commodities we're paying to get rid of. We don't know from week to week what that's going to be. We haven't seen anything crazy, but generally, prices are changing every week. The transportation to Las Vegas for a big chunk of what we, what we collect, cardboard and mixed paper, we do have a local place for that. We pick up those loads at the drop site, and we take a rate to Bulldog. Everything else comes back to the yard and is loaded up and taken to Las Vegas.
Now, glass is the only thing that we're taking up there?
No, we're taking...
We're taking baskets as well.
So, and then for the commodities that are coming out of the pilot program, there's the additional cost of labor for sorting those in our yard before we transport them up to Las Vegas. It's just an additional cost.
I got a couple of quick points there. On your new way of thinking slide there, reduce, reuse, and recycle, I get the Reforce Recycling Magazine every month, and there have been reports of cities completely stopping their recycling program because of the contamination level. And then other ones have went from the single stream to dual stream again. It started out that way and then switched to a single stream. But then you have others that switch from that to the single stream. So I think it's kind of what the locale will put up with and can stand. So those, both of those are, it's going all over the map. Some people are doing better, some are doing worse, some quitting, and it's all over. And I think it's really good that we're trying to keep going. And on the sanitation fund balance, is there a percentage that we're trying to maintain in the, whatever account it is, to have a reserve?
Yeah, and, don't quote me on this because I'm not an accountant, but I believe that we try to maintain a 25% fund balance. That's along with kind of the emergency funds to be able to operate if we're unable to collect rates for like a 90-day period.
And do we put money aside whenever there is money for the replacement vehicles and don't touch that?
Not currently. I think that some of those kind of capital budgeting concepts may be coming our way. The former interim city manager, Mr. Bacon, talked a lot about that, that kind of capital budgeting to where you're, you do have a separate account where you're banking money to pay for those replacements. We kind of do have that in the, in water and wastewater, there are capital renewal rates. If you look at your water bill, it's broken out, and there'd be a separate line item called capital renewal. But that's for, is to replace some of these antiquated old water lines. Sanitation's not set up that way right now. I suspect that it may be in the future. That, I think that's all I had.
As far as staff is concerned, is the curbside recycling program kind of, meaning it's, we've got the information from it, is it profitable to continue with it? I mean, obviously, it's not profitable when you look at these figures. Is it wise to continue with it?
I guess I don't see the plan of continuing the pilot, and I don't think we're anywhere near ready to go citywide. Because if you look at those costs, I mean, that showed an additional $60 on top of the existing sanitation rate, which is insufficient to keep the fund and keep us be able to buy new trucks every few years. I don't think we're in a position to do it now. I think that, I think we'll have a consultant in here that's a lot smarter than me, probably not any smarter than Donna or Eddie, but they're going to help us with this rate study. And another thing I hope too out of this rate study is that we can find some efficiencies in the way that we do things. I think we all kind of get in the habit of doing things the way we're comfortable or the way we were taught when we got into a job. And I think there's opportunities in the way that we conduct our operations to find efficiencies, maybe on the solid waste side, that would be able to absorb some of the additional costs on the recycling side or vice versa. I just don't think we're in a position to go citywide. I think we've gotten all the information that we can get out of the pilot. I would like to conclude that and continue with the drop program until we have that rate and revenue study done, and we're able to look at those alternatives. We know if we get a good number for how much it's going to cost us so that we've got a healthy fund balance in sanitation to handle solid waste, and look at those other options for a citywide curbside or continuation of the drop program. That's my recommendation.
The curbside recycling containers that we have right now, if we stop the program, could the lids just be changed out to the green color from the blue and reuse the, keep the cans as they are?
Yes, sir. That was the intent at the beginning, that we just had to change out the lids and be able to incorporate.
Wouldn't be losing anything there and having a bunch of cans sitting around. It would be nothing.
I have one question.
Yes.
Rob, do you have any idea when this new study is going to be done? You haven't even hired anybody yet, right? You're looking at a year, two years?
Oh, no. It needs to get done this budget year. It's in, our year just started in July.
Right.
So we talked to, we've talked to consultants to kind of outline what we're looking for, and we've asked for proposals back from them. We have not received those yet.
But is there a time limit when you get that report back from them?
Well, I guess when we negotiate the contract with them, it'll have, it'll say that they have to complete this.
So you haven't even done that yet?
No, we've just asked for proposals from consultants.
Understand, understand.
When we do a contract, we'll say we want this in 120 days or 180 days or whatever that is.
I hate to see it go, but there's just no way.
My feeling is to postpone it now, do away with it now, but keep it in the background so in case things should turn around, we can start up the curbside.
Or wait till the report comes back.
Wait till the report comes out.
Are you looking for a motion?
Yes, ma'am. It's at the commission's discretion. If you're all comfortable with it, I would ask for a recommendation to the council that we discontinue the pilot program and continue the easy drop recycling program.
That would be my feeling. Carol, do you have something to say? Carol, do you have something to say?
Anyway, I'm still Carol DeCarnoli, and I still live on Oak Street. And I wanna thank all of you for all you've done to get this recycling off the ground. And even if we have to continue going to the big dumpsters and sorting and all that, it's better than nothing. So, I hope you never not do that. But I have visions bigger than most people, and I wish I had the money to back it up. But anyway, we're the heart of Route sixty-six. I want us to be the best in the west, and I want us to be the cleanest city. And I just can't believe, now that we got the airport back in our control, if it was even possible to get a group together that had vision enough to say, okay, we're gonna take these products and grind them up and make paper creed or something out of it, that's something you make out of paper, it has to be the, not the printed, I mean, just the regular newspaper, not the pretty kind, you know, not the shiny kind. And with Portland cement and so many, and you can make bricks out of it to do things like that, maybe sell those. But this would be more of an entrepreneur thing. But if the word gets out that, you know, these things are possible and maybe out at our airport, and, um, as far as the curbside, I would love it. As an older person, it's a pain in the neck to drag my totes to the dumpsters, and I don't even drive, so I get my neighbor, I say, okay, it's time to do the recycling. And the other thing is, I think we need to have more stuff going on and educating people what they can put in and can't put in. And, you know, if you want your little plastic cups clean and bright and shiny, okay. But, you know, I was, I was kind of cleaning everything up, almost like ID operator again. And they told me I didn't have to do that. But I really do, do want this to go. And I just think if we could kind of get this vision out here for our city to be bigger and better and maybe a pilot thing for other cities. And the county, you're right, the county should pitch in, but it's gonna be hard. I used to work for the county, and I know anything we want in Kingman, like Havasu and, you know, Bullhead, it wants the same. How are their programs doing? Do they have a successful thing going? Do they have fires for their stuff? I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine. Um, and we've talked about this before, you know, Havasu and Bullhead, they are both served by Republic, you know, again, which is one of the two biggest waste handlers in the world. They do offer curbside, they offer it as an option, I believe. But again, they have a MRF, they have their own MRF, a Republic MRF, up in Las Vegas. You know, that's who we're hauling to most of the time, is the Republic MRF. So, they are able to continue it. Um, I don't know, you know, I don't know where they get rid of their commodities. I don't know that everything's actually recycled. I, you know, I don't know, I don't know that operation.
Is room at the airport for a facility that the city could have? Well, at least to store the stuff, if you, like, the cardboard, if we could get it mailed and eventually put a MRF out there, maybe. And the city, is it city-owned or city-managed? If the city owns it, why can't we get a building out there?
But still, you're still paying people to take it even if we bundle it, right?
Well, that's because you have a better chance of selling it as opposed to paying somebody to take it if you can process it and for sale and get it into proper packaging and proper quantity, then you can sell it. Used to be for more money, now it's, it's a lot less, but it's a lot more than what you're getting paying forty-five dollars a ton to get rid of your cardboard. If you could sell it for fifty bucks a ton, that's a hundred bucks a ton difference. So, that's why you'd wanna store and process it.
I mean, I think that's something we could look into. I think, but again, the airport is like us, if they're an enterprise fund, they can't give anything away. You know, if MRF was gonna be built out there either by us, the county, or whoever, you know, somebody's gonna have to purchase that property at full value because that's how the airport is gonna survive going forward, is the money that they generate with their leases and sales is gonna pay for the upkeep of that airport.
So, the city's gotta buy land from the city to do city business?
It would be the same in sanitation, you know. We can't give anything away because it's not, that's the ratepayers' money, you know, the same, the same as it would be out at the airport.
So, if the county, if the sanitation leased a building from the airport and did whatever they wanna do in it, then that would be an option if the money, obviously, is there?
Yeah, I don't know that it'd be a lot cheaper than us buying land somewhere else and building a building, you know. I mean, there wouldn't be any discount in there, I guess.
Does your future report from these people, um, how do I wanna say this? Are they looking into the MRFs too? Have you requested that?
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to work through a scope. You know, I've got a certain amount of money budgeted.
Oh, okay.
The bigger the scope gets, the more expensive the study gets.
That's true, too.
And they're more of a financial operations, you know. How much does it cost you to do your business? How much do you need to charge the ratepayers to maintain that, to stay solvent? I don't know that they're really in the MRF business. But I mean, we, you know, we'll talk to them about all of our options and get a response.
My feeling is that it boils down to this whole thing is, where do we put it? I mean, we can bundle it, we can stack it, but where do we put it?
You have to pay to store it, so.
Yeah, gotta sort it and store it. I think for the time being, as I say, discontinue this program until such time as there's a market for materials, and then maybe a, maybe some kind of a MRF could be set up after the study is done. But there's gotta be a market to sell the stuff. And it's costing us money, but we're not getting anything back, or we're just barely breaking even on some of it. My recommendation is that we discontinue the program, stick with the drop boxes.
Until we get the report. At least, let's take a look at, maybe after the report, right?
Yeah.
And I, the commission will be involved in the sanitation rate study. You know, we'll make that information available as we're going through that process of finalizing that rate study.
Oh, gosh.
Do we wanna take a vote on this as far as the commission is concerned?
Well, I'll make that motion. I don't like it, but I'll make the motion to discontinue the pilot program until the rate study is done. Maybe, maybe something will come out of that, but until then, second it.
Motion been made, seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Okay.
I hate it. Hate it, hate it, hate it.
C, recycling and beautification subcommittees, could we table that until next month when Sarah might be here? She was the one that was kind of looking at this, this subcommittee beautification thing and for the recycling.
But if...
Unless somebody...
But if we've made the motion, there's no reason to have a recycle committee, is there?
Pardon me?
We've already made the motion and voted to discontinue. What's the purpose of having a subcommittee?
That's completely impossible. Action regarding the formation of a recycling subcommittee and beautification.
I can see beautification, but...
And, yeah, we've got, we've made the motion on the recycling.
The curbside recycling is what we made the motion on. We still have recycling.
Okay, okay, understood.
Because we're starting to run a little long right now. We got a question?
Oh, I have a question. Go ahead with I fully project as far as the group getting together, because there's also this, this ideas papers off to the radio applying the expense. We heard a lot of comments when we were down there at the dedication. People saying, well, it's a pain in the neck to do it next step. The kids throw the garbage in the old van. We gotta teach people what forms of expense that might be there. At the radio, TV, that way if we gotta keep it together, plan something as work done, as individuals, or individual, that may be right, have a whole recycling.
My thinking on this, as far as tabling it is concerned, in item A on the, on new business, I'd like to wait until after this meeting on...
Okay.
On the twenty-fourth is done, because there'll be a whole lot of ideas coming out of that and various other commissions, especially Historic Preservation Commission, and see what, what may come out of that before we make any kind of decision here. And I'd like to wait till next month on that one, if we could.
Okay.
Anybody in agreement with that?
That would need to be...
Voted on?
Oh, you need a motion? I make a motion that we table item four C till next meeting.
I'll second that. Got a motion, seconded, that we table item C on old business and discussion? If not, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Thank you. Okay, we can continue on new business. Joint meeting with Historic Preservation Commission. The discussion of possible action regarding a joint meeting with Historic Preservation Commission. And there will be other commissions involved with that as well as the Historic Preservation. I have asked Commissioner Bowman to join me on, as a representative of the Clean City Commission, to attend that meeting on the twenty-fourth. She agreed to do that, so, uh, we'll see what comes of this meeting.
Mr. Chairman, could we get a motion to appoint Commissioner Bowman and yourselves as representatives to attend the joint?
I'm sorry?
Could we get a motion to, for the co-body to appoint?
If we need it, okay. Anybody make a motion?
I'll make a motion that yourself and Commissioner Bowman attend the joint Historical Preservation Commission on the twenty-fourth.
Motion been made, by second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Announcements by commission members limited to announcements, available attendance at conferences and seminars, request for, and it ends right there. Okay. Commissioner Hollis, you have anything?
I have a question of either Ed or Rob. On, since we're not doing the community cleanup, what's the people in Kingman doing with their tires other than bring them out there to Golden Valley for me to pick up?
Well, you know, again, we can't really discuss it because it wasn't on the agenda. What we can do is put an update on next month's agenda regarding the three-dollar pickups and try to address some of that. So, we can, we'll put that on next month's agenda.
The three-dollar pickup, we'll be picking up tires?
Oh, and there's no rims.
No, no rim. They will pick up the tires, though.
And the other thing I had was to put on the future agenda is, how do we involve the communities in cleaning up their, where they live? Either by subdivision or section or blocks or however you wanna do it. But we need to get the community involved, not just us. So, I'm open for, to discuss that, if you can get that on the agenda and we can see if we can't come up with something that might work.
Okay.
Then that's all right.
Commissioner Thomas?
No, I have any...
Commissioner Bowman?
Like I said, I attended the transit meeting yesterday morning. Good response. So, I gave Sarah's email, and it seemed like maybe we might get somebody to help us work at the fair. They were very responsive. Also, Stuart, can I get that we invite the city council to the fair booth? Can that be put on the agenda for the city council?
Sure.
Do I have to do that, or you do that?
I can do it on your behalf.
Thank you.
You're on, absolutely, you're welcome. Pleasure.
Is that okay?
Okay. Couple of things, and just an announcement about our Day of Caring that's gonna be happening in September. We've still got plenty of time on it, but I thought I'd get everybody thinking on it. It's Saturday, September eighth at six a.m., and we'll be doing our adoptive block from five and J down to the DMV. And we're trying to get, we've got all the other adoptive block people coming on board, and we're trying to get more and more organizations to where we can get somewheres in the vicinity of three hundred and fifty to four hundred people out cleaning up the city just prior. So, I've got, I left some brochures, if anyone wants one, they're sitting on the table over there. And so, that will be happening in September. Something I'd like to get on our next month's agenda is our reusable bag giveaway program. I talked with BASHs, and they're, as far as the managers are concerned, they're, they're fine with it, but they would like a letter from the city or the Clean City Commission indicating what we want to do, and they would be willing to donate bags right along with us. So, if, what I was thinking...
We can put that on next month's agenda.
Put it on the agenda, and then we can discuss this next month, yeah, because there's a couple of things there. And this Friday is Chilling on Deal. I think that's about all I have.
Whoops, no, you said Friday, Saturday.
Or Saturday, I'm sorry, this is Saturday. Today is, tomorrow's Friday, yes, this is Saturday is Chilling on Deal. Weather should be good. So, that's all I have.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Anybody disagree? Motion carry.
I don't want that one. Not when I'm going to...
Yeah. I don't...